Good evening and welcome to the May 17, 2022 meeting of the Chatham Select Board. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. And if anyone is, anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and that's General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until July 15, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, and our conference ID is 203-386-491. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Now, while this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting in the town's website as soon as possible. And again, welcome, everyone. Please, as a reminder, mute your mics and turn off your cameras until you're called on, and let's start with a roll call. We'll start with Vice Chair Shereen Davis.
President.
Our Clerk Cory Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member Deanie Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Jeff Dyken, sorry.
Present.
And the Chair Peter Kokolos is present. Okay, we have a relatively short agenda tonight. We start with public announcement and agenda item request, then we have two public hearings, one of a change of manager for an alcoholic beverages at Branches Grill and Cafe, and then a change in category of alcoholic beverages for Mom &amp; Pops. We then have public comments on the following agenda items, and there are just two: mobile food vending regulations, this is our second reading and possible vote, and then a review of the annual town meeting, a review and discussion and follow-up. So with that, from the board, do we have any public announcements? Dean?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. On Saturday, the town meeting voted to approve the $425,000 preschool program on which a working group that the town manager put together advanced, and one of the principals in that process was Florence Selden, former, late former member of the Select Board and many other activities in town. She was a lifelong educator, and she was very much a proponent of that particular program. I would like to have the, I would like to request as an agenda item that the Select Board consider naming the preschool program in her honor as the Dr. Florence Selden Preschool Program. I did reach out to Dr. Selden's family, and they are certainly, they would be receptive to the idea. I didn't want to bring this forward without their okay, so I wanted to get that agenda item forward, and hopefully whoever is next chair of the board will put it on the agenda early to give us an opportunity.
Thank you, Dean.
To raise your position on that. Thank you.
And Shawna, I would support that too and get it on as soon as we could, I guess.
That's great.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, me too, I'll support it.
Also.
So Cory had his hand up, too.
Oh, okay, Cory, and then Shereen.
Sure, I don't want to, okay, a little feedback. I'm hoping, I'm probably not the only one who's going to take a moment just to take, give my sincere thanks through our outgoing chair. Not only have all of us had the pleasure of serving with Peter on the Select Board, Peter and I got to serve time on the planning board. So I totally want to take the moment to thank him for his service, time and effort he's put into it, and all the ups and downs that we all get to go through in our pledge to serve the town of Chatham. And on a side note, Peter, I'll give you about a year to rest, and then I'm going to find an opening for you on one of our opening boards or committees. I'm sure we can find something where you could keep yourself occupied in. So no, just thank you for your service, you know, take some time off, rest, but don't stray too far. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Cory. Thanks very much. Shereen?
I'm going to reiterate that. I actually wrote some stuff here because I think I spoke to you already and privately about this, but you know, it was a pleasure working with you, Peter, and I was, I've always been fascinated by your pre-Chatham experience. You know, you were, had a career in the Air Force, serving in the Vietnam and at the Pentagon, and I want to thank you for your service. Then you moved here, well, then you moved on to private industry before you retired to Chatham, and as soon as you got here, you jumped right in, and you volunteered in, I think, Cape Light Compact Planning Board, and then serving on the Select Board with this team, which I think we've had a good run and so far. It was really a pleasure having you as my vice chair when I was chairman, and then I enjoyed my time as your chair, vice chair, because we really collaborated, talked a lot about our visions, for the, for the community, and mostly around the agenda items, but you know, we definitely get to some of the substance of why we're doing things. Your knowledge and your abilities have been a real, real asset to Chatham, and I just want to say with the sincerity, thank you, and I don't think this is the last that we'll see of you.
Thank you, Shereen. Shereen was one of the first people I went to when I was going to run. If you, if you saw me during that period of time, and I was in front of the town hall, I walked up the stairs, I walked down the stairs, I walked up the stairs, walked up, finally went in and got my papers, so I'm glad, I'm glad I did. Thank you.
Yeah, in the same spirit, if I might, Mr. Chairman, it's been a, been a pleasure. I'm sure we'll see you around and about in some capacity. I would hope you're going to continue with the Cape Light Compact in that role, because you're wonderful in that role. I enjoyed your engineering background. We've got a CPA and a lawyer and a wonderful advocate, and, but it really, you just, you brought so much neat experience that we didn't have. Very different perspective at times. Now, sometimes you left me scratching my head, Pete, but other than that, no, no.
All right, talk too much.
No, it's been great, and I've really appreciated your chairmanship. I tour fairly well, I really have. It's been great, and I really do appreciate your efforts, and you're thoughtful, you're kind, you're honest. It's good stuff.
Thank you, Jeff. And Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me add my thoughts as well, in recognition of your outstanding record of public service and your leadership of the board as a voice of moderation and decency and balance, and what the public doesn't see is how respectful and decent a colleague you are behind the scenes as well. So we're going to miss you, we're going to miss your particular expertise, but we're just going to miss you personally as well. But we'll see you around, and I think we all have certain ideas about where you might wind up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Chairman, Peter.
Well, no, thank you all. I do, would like to make a few comments.
Can I interrupt you for the last time?
Yes, sir.
As Chair, I wanted, on behalf of the team, to give you a little token of our appreciation. I just have to go get it over here.
[Laughter]
It's easier for you to see here, but I'll be over, so. We couldn't afford to give you a stoplight for your comments on how to manage and prioritize capital projects that we discussed over many meetings, but I wanted to present this to you, Peter. It's our Green Communities designation. It's our sign that will be up at every entrance to Chatham, and you were instrumental on this, and this is a Green Communities designation official since 2020. Your work on the planning board, the energy committee, Select Board, and also bringing it to town meetings, I wanted to thank you for your service, and it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Jill. [Applause] It only took eight years to get this? Started it back in 2009. Well, thank you all. I guess, I was only going to say a few words, but since I have three pages of prepared speech. Yeah, why not? No, no, it, you know, it's an honor, you know, to serve in this community and with the people in this community. This is an accomplished group of people, no matter, you don't have to have letters after your name to see what, what kind of folks we have here, and it's, it's been a real honor for me, again, to, to, to serve all and try to serve all. You know, I also got, over the years, you, when you start working with the town manager and the, and the professional staff and talented group we're working with, I can honestly say that I trust them. And, you know, we, we have differences, and yeah, well, I want to get things done faster. Municipal government's a little tougher than, than, than industry to move ahead faster, but it is a, it is a very professional group, and I think they try and do the best that they can, and they, we'll get into some of that later. I mean, they, they do just wonderful things, but in any way, I do want to, I do want to recognize this board and the people on the board. You all have been on this longer than I have. You all were chairs before me. I'm, I've been around long enough to remember when, quote, "building teams" was the new thing. You kind of wonder why that's so new, but that's a number of years ago. And the thing about a team is what kind of diversity you have, the people that are on, diversity, the backgrounds and so forth, but the most important thing is the people that are on it. One, you have to, you trust each other, you try to do what's best, and in our case, for the town, and the best interest of this town always takes precedent, and, and obvious to think everyone who, who watches us, we do not always agree, and each of us at one time or another with a lone vote on something, and that's the way it should be. I mean, if we were all marching in step, but we do focus on the important things. We've worked through some extraordinary times. This, this whole town has, a number of people have, things that we never thought we would do, and it, you, we look, you know, you kind of forget what was going on during the first part of the COVID and that first year, but it was difficult. I mean, you think of what had to be done, the number of priorities we put on hold, and then we came back and took on those priorities again, and then we had PFAS to throw that in to make it a little bit easier. That's tongue-in-cheek, but we've, we've been able to do that, and we've set priorities, and we're finally moving ahead on, on housing. We moved quickly, and this is with the town and with the public, I have to admit, the public has a great input on this, and we've moved ahead on PFAS and getting a water supply and a water quality that's down. And I could honestly say that all of us collectively have done a wonderful job. Our independent reviews of Chatham, you know, talk about how well-managed this town is and, and how well we keep our tax rate at a, at a good, a good level. And again, I'll mention, we have great, good committees, we have volunteers, citizens out there that volunteer their time and, and put a lot of their talent in, and we have a number of people that come in here with public comments, and I know some don't believe this, but we read them all, and we consider them all, and we make decisions based upon that. But I, there's probably two other things I do want to mention. One is, I never thought I'd ever be here when I retired. You know, municipal government wasn't necessarily at the top of my list, but I found that my whole career kind of fit here, which was helpful. And the, the other thing I'd like to mention, because I don't know if she's watching or not, but my wife has been very supportive in her strength and wisdom, and yes, I do appreciate her, her, her constructive comments when I come home from every Select Board meeting. That keeps you, that keeps you settled. But in any case, yes, I am going to stay. I'm going to stay on the Cape Light Compact, and I'm just hoping that, that, you know, no matter how everything works out, we just continue to be the great town that we are. So thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, back in. I was expecting someone to say, all right, cut it off. All right. Any other public announcements? Any from the staff or any from the public? Let's see if I have any hands up. I have Rick Levitt. I see this top of my list right now. Rick?
Thank you, Peter, and I just simply wanted to say congratulations for your tenure on this Select Board. You've made a tremendous contribution to this town, and you should be very proud of yourself, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Rick. Okay, anyone else? Any other public comment? Okay, let's get on with our new business, and the first up is a public hearing on changes of manager for an all-alcoholic beverage restaurant for Branches Grill and Cafe, and Cory, read the announcement, please.
Sure, absolutely. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room of the Town Office Annex 261, George Rider Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider a request for a change of manager to the annual all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for Branches Grill and Cafe LLC. From Temera Beal to Ian Burt, all interested parties are encouraged to participate, sign members of the Select Board.
Thank you, Cory. Is Mr. Burt on or here? No, I'll make one comment. He is now the, going to be, is proposed to be the, the new manager of record, and he became a naturalized United States citizen in April of 2021, and I just wanted to congratulate him. It's wonderful, and that's a year later than we probably should have announced it, but we don't know about it, but it's many of us here are here because our immediate ancestors came over and did exactly what he did, and that is not an easy process. So congratulations. So with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the application for a change of manager to the all-alcoholic beverages license for Branches Grill and Cafe LLC, from Temera Beal to Ian Burt.
Second.
Do you have a second? Any board discussion? Any public, anything from the public? Okay, seeing none, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you. Next up is a change of category to an alcoholic beverages, Mom &amp; Pop. Cory, again.
All right, I might have a smoke alarm going on in the background, so bear with me. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room of Town Office Annex 261, George Rider Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider a request for a change of category to the annual alcoholic beverages restaurant license for Backpack Forever LLC, DBA, Chet, Mom &amp; Pops, from a, from wine and malt beverages only to all alcohol, all alcoholic beverages, excuse me. All interested parties are encouraged to participate, again, sign members of the Select Board.
All right, thank you, Cory. I know someone from Mom &amp; Pops, is it right, Tom? Or no, yeah, if you're bought, you can say a few words, if not.
There's any questions?
No, let's see. Any questions from the board? Dean?
I just have a couple of questions for Shawna. So Shawna, she's, the town was by special legislation in 2008 awarded two additional all-alcohol. Where, where is the second one?
The second one is actually held by Branches. It was tied to Kroll Road. Yes.
Okay, that's, I remember that now. If, if this license is granted, then the, the wine and malt license that they have becomes available. Is there anyone in line to get that?
I don't have any pending applications, but I'm sure someone will when they know that it's available.
Okay, and the final question, in the application form, they have like a checklist, and one says a butters notification. Is that required in this instance?
Yes.
So they were notified?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I don't have any questions of the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Any public comments? I don't see any online, so let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
I think we did.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Did we move it?
Yeah, I thought we had a motion. No?
I don't, I don't.
All right, just in case.
The chairman.
Let's have a motion.
You're rushing things tonight.
I move to approve the application for a change of category to the annual liquor license held by Backpack Forever LLC, doing business as Mom &amp; Pops, from wine and malt only to all-alcoholic beverages.
Second.
Second. All right, let's try this again. I'm going to go the other way. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Any public comments on the following business agenda, the mobile food trucks regulations or our annual town meeting? I see, I see a hand up on Teams. Anyone else? All right, again, it's, guess, guess, that has to be Elaine. Go ahead, Elaine.
Thank you. I may be totally out of order, if I am, just let me know, but I missed a public comment. I thought it was going to happen after all the kudos for you, Peter, and, you know, I had my thanks for your service. I was just wondering if we could have an update on the town hall. I had read in the Cape Cod Times it's going to be shut down for another four weeks. If you can't do it now, that's okay, but I haven't read any more about it since then.
Okay.
You know, what the plan is for us who have to do business there. Thank you. If you can't, that's okay. I understand. I missed it.
All right, thank you, Elaine. Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we met on site today at 5:49, and with the team of the electricians, the HVAC controls, contractors, in-town staff, had an update. So right now, it looks like it's another three weeks, that would be a total of four from last week, that I had reported to the board. The power surge from Eversource really destroyed most of the wiring in the office, and also what happened as they were working to energize the HVAC system in the boiler. Yesterday, there was a gas leak detected, and so we're working to resolve that, and the, the contractors are thinking that this is due to the over-energized building because of the transformer issue that we had. So we're remote. Shawna, the Select Board, HR, myself, staff, we're at the fire station upstairs. The finance team is located at the town hall annex. That's treasurer collector's office, assessors, IT, and Alex herself, and then the town clerk is located at the community center. She's been there for the last few weeks and will continue to be there, and we're still checking emails, phones are being answered because everything can be done remotely. One thing that Eversource had notified us today is that they do need to do a planned outage for our building, the spa, the real estate office, and then the congregate housing behind us, and that will be Monday morning, the 23rd, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and they're replacing the part that was malfunctioning on the transformer. So staff has worked with the town's insurer. The adjuster is coming out on Thursday. We have a ton of pictures. We have the process to file for a claim against Eversource, and today, there- And today, there were some areas of the building that were energized and working, but it seems that there's, there's always something that, once they're checking, or especially with the gas leak today, was something that we hadn't expected. But luckily, it's unoccupied and we were able to fix it. The bathrooms at the town hall, 549, are inoperable at this time, but Kate Gould's open and so are the bathrooms behind the Orpheum. We're just talking today if we need to have porta-potties at the town offices just in case for an underserved area. So, we're looking at that. Town staff's been very patient. Our, our host at the fire station, Annex, Community Center have been really great in, in as we encroach on, on their area. So, we're going to have weekly meetings. And our project lead internally will be Gary Glazer. He's our DPW superintendent. And we have Tyler Payne from Payne Electric, who is our, our lead contractor for, and most of it is electrical issues that he's working to resolve.
Is there any, how about people that are putting in their requests? A lot of it is that the annex is here anyway. I mean, some of the requests that would be made. And most of yours, Shauna, yours is all email or can be, right?
Yeah, email, phones, staff. There is a person going to 549 every day, picking up mail, checking drop boxes. I know that the treasure collector's office, they were able to work onsite at Cape Cod 5 for the deposits, just for that process. So, it's secure and it's safe. So, we're, we're functioning, but it, it is challenging immediately.
Thank you. Anything from the board? Well, okay. Thank you, Elaine. So, let's move ahead with our mobile, mobile food vending regulations. And this is the second time we've seen it. I guess I'll go to Shauna.
Thank you. Yes, very minor changes to the regulations from town council's review. It was just some, some language consistency things that he picked up on that he suggested. Other than that, the staff went on site visits to the five sites that were proposed. And just to look at where within the site we would recommend that the trucks actually park so that that would reduce pedestrians in vehicle travel lanes throughout the lots. We've taken pictures of those spots and included them in the report. One thing that did come up is the condition of the Eldridge Garage Lot at this time. There was, from the drainage work that was done, the area that we would suggest is not, it's not, doesn't have a consistent surface. So, we think for this year, it might be best not to bring that lot forward, to have that lot start on, I believe we suggested June 1st of 2023. And the only other thing, I believe, was the question about any kind of local preference. And town council did opine on that and suggested that it would probably be challenged if we did go that route. And so, it would probably be best not to, not to include a local preference.
Okay, thank you, Shauna. I misspoke. We're not going to take a vote tonight. Second reading. I saw Shereen's hand up. Jeff and then Dean.
So, I know Eldridge Garage was the one place that the area businesses were really interested in having, having a mobile food truck. So, I'd really like to better understand if there's not an alternative area in that parking lot.
We, we could locate in a different area. The concern was with the residences to the right-hand side. If there were generators, the noise from the generators for the trucks might be a problem. There's possibility towards the back. Again, the surface is not consistent, so it, it's possible. One of the things that may help with the demand for that area is that the merchants plan to come forward with their plan for Mondays on Main to include a request for a food truck at 400 Main Street.
Just on Mondays?
Just on Mondays, for the Mondays on Main event.
I have one more question, Mr. Chair. And so, I'm a little confused about the downtown mobile unit being only off-season. I can't recall our conversation about that. It was my assumption that it would be a, an opportunity for the summer to offset, I think Corey had brought this up, offset food options for workers in the summer.
It's just the concern about the taking up the spaces in the parking lot during the season.
Okay.
We're hoping that Oyster Pond might take some of that.
Yeah. I, I, that means that now the idea of having mobile vendors within the downtown area is now longer, no longer really a viable thing for the summer. And I, I guess from my point of view is two of the staff parking lot, because it was going to go in staff. Is that going to encumber parking for staff to give up those two space, those two staff spaces? Excuse me.
I, I think it just depends on the timing that you would want to see it there. If it was 11:00 AM to sunset, as we had proposed for, for the other downtown lot, it may, that lot, it does generally fill up fairly early in the day. So, it, that may be a challenge.
Okay. We know parking is a problem in Chatham, obviously. Is that conflicting with the idea of bringing mobile food trucks to downtown? I guess that's my question to the board.
Okay. Jeff, Dean, and then Corey.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I had the exact same questions that selectman, select board member Davis had. The only place, I went through very carefully, the only place that's really open, 111 to 1231, is on Route 137 from, for lunch and potentially dinners, from 11:00 AM to sunset. I, I echo the sentiments about the Eldridge Garage, Eldridge Garage parking lot. If we could find a flat spot there, I would like to see it open 22, not 23. We're waiting a whole year for that. And that would be another, at least, option downtown during the height of the summer, June to September, for a local option downtown. If that can't be found, and even if it can be found, I also am willing to give up two spaces in the town office's parking lot to give the mobile vendors, to give the pilot program, if you will, a shot in the height of the season. Otherwise, we're not, we're not going to find out what the demand really is or isn't, whether it meets the needs of either visitors or employees or anybody. So, I, I absolutely echo select person Davis, that maybe we can free up a couple of spots there, and I'd be willing to do that. And then, the January to May, the community center, I understand is in deference to the, you know, the, the facility that we have at the ball field. But, you know, that's pretty busy and it gets very busy. And people walk through that parking lot to get there. So, I'm not immune to even discussing that as well. Just to give it a shot, what, what is the demand out there? Now, I know that the Anglers will have a fit, but, but what is the demand? And if we don't, if we don't test it, we won't know. And, and on parking, hopefully, the parking subcommittee will have some suggestions on whether, where town employees and other employees can park other than downtown. More to come, but.
Thank you, Jeff. That's a good point, because we're looking, we have some options. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the community center, I did, did want to ask this, the sort of out-of-season proposal that's in, in this list, has that been checked with the Park and Rec Department or Board Commission?
With the commission, no. We can certainly go to them formally with the request to use the parking lot. Generally, the lot falls under the board's purview.
Right.
It was suggested when we went to the different locations and we were speaking about the, the town office parking lot. And it would just, it came up, you know, what if during the off-season we had either the community center or town hall? Could be, could be either or, or supplement to both, just because of the number of businesses in the area that closed during the winter months. So, we thought we'd bring it forward and see what you thought of that idea.
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine they'd have a problem with the off-season usage of it. But it probably, I don't know. Are we planning to take a vote on this tonight, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Okay. So, maybe we should at least run this by the Park and Rec Commission. I'm not sure I, on this one, I, I would share the same interest that, that my colleague to my right has, has proposed. Because we heard from Steve West, the president of the Anglers, they do have some concerns. So, I'd rather not push that in the season. I do, however, agree with both Jeff and Shereen about the Eldridge Garage usage starting this season rather than next season, if we can accommodate it in some way that doesn't disturb the neighborhood. I think it might even encourage people to park at the Eldridge Garage. And that's a little money in the, in the town, town's pocket. And the, the town office's parking lot, I also agree with Jeff and Shereen. I, I think probably that should not be limited to just the off-season. Those are my suggestions.
I have Corey, but before I do, and Shereen wants to come back, I'm going to just, our policy is that, you know, has been, we take public comments before our agenda item. We have people here that are, that are associated with mobile food trucks. We also have some online that may be interested. I'd be willing to let people talk during the agenda item if it's okay with the board. You guys are okay? Okay. So, you want to answer something, Shereen?
No, Corey was first. I have additional comments.
Okay. Corey?
Sure, thank you, Peter. As far as the Eldridge Garage, I think we're on the same page as that, so I'm not going to waste any more time with restating what has already been stated. The downtown model, Shereen was absolutely correct in her comments about what I said. I do think it was meant for the summertime to kind of, I could understand what's happening. I mean, there is a need on high-volume nights that, you know, people who are working downtown who are looking to get takeout have even limited options because the restaurants are high-capacity and not doing, offering takeout, which is good for them, bad for, bad for employees looking for bite deep. So, this is, this is a pilot program. This is for testing this. So, I do, I did see this happening during the summer to kind of get a better understanding of its, you know, of its benefits or lack thereof. I do have two questions. There's no particular parking spaces at the community center in the pack that were designated. So, I was curious about if, if there is a certain area, is this absolutely parking paved asphalt spots? I do recall, how many years ago, some of the food vendors used the, just off the parking spot on the grass area of the green space in the, you know, for like a first-night event. Would that be a more viable spot in the off-season for them to park if it doesn't hurt the lawn, because of access to electrical cords or whatever? I don't know. So, I just want to be clear, figure out clarity for a community center parking lot, area usage, et cetera, et cetera. And then, the one thing I don't think we have up here, it's, hopefully, it's not to create a problem, it's to prevent problems, but set up protocols. Is there going to be a certain time that people are going to, the vendor gets to set up on a spot? Are they putting cones out earlier? Obviously, they're going to have a vehicle with, with, you know, the vending. Probably not, but would they have a secondary vehicle with an employee coming in another car? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe not necessary. I just want to make sure that, that it's very clear about when they can set up and it doesn't interfere with anything prior to their allotted spots or a timetable. So, just looking for input on that, thoughts on that. But I think we can, you know, you know, obviously, reach out to the merchants, you know, figuring what their Mondays on Main programs are going to be. You know, work with the public, continue, continue to work with the public and, you know, see what this, what gives on this and give it a shot. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Shereen?
So, I want to just back up on the community center a little bit about the timing. The A's schedule is not every day in the summer. The A's schedule, I don't even know if they have day games. Do they?
Do they have what?
I don't know. Do they, day games?
No.
Corey has a schedule.
Corey has a schedule right there.
Okay. Look at that. Good for you, Corey. All right. So, that's one question. Do they have, and so, the other piece of it is, you know, we have lots of kids that do the recreational program there. And their food options, if they haven't brought anything, is vending machines in the, in the community center. And it would be really great if they had a healthy food choice other than soda and chips. And I think if we could afford to do a vending machine at the, vending, a mobile food vendor at the community center during the daytime hours, you know, in the summer, when there isn't an A-game schedule during the day, which I'm not even sure there are, that stops at a certain time of the day that does not conflict with the A's vending methodology and vending program that they have, then I think we should have it for the summer.
Yeah, thank you, Shereen. I was going to mention, taking a look, you have to look at that schedule. It's not easy. But the schedule's out early and they, as far as I know, all the games start at 7:00 o'clock or 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock. And we certainly don't want to do it when the games are there. Okay. Anyone else from the board?
Mr. Chair, I just want to note, so during the after-school program, so from about 3:15 to 5:30 or 6:00 at the community center, the kids are outside. There's a lot of activity going on. So, that's while school's in session. And then, they have certain programs during the vacation weeks. But I think that with the camp program, they're able to, if it's, depending on what the program is, they can go inside on the lower level of the community center. I'm just trying to think of the activity of, you know, parent drop-offs. And there is, that's a bus drop-off during the school year. So, that's something that we could map out and talk to the Park and Rec Commission on.
Okay, thank you. It was Dean and then Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. Corey, are there any day games that you see there?
So, according to the schedule, most of the games start at 7:00. There is, I'm strictly talking home games. On June 19th, there's a doubleheader, 4:30 and 7:00. Then, we get into July, seven, seven all-around, except for the All-Star Game on July 23rd, which is a 6:00 start, which, it's in Wareham, actually, so it doesn't apply. No, it's all 7:00s in July, July and August, and then we get into the playoffs. So, no. With the exception of the doubleheader on the 19th of June, everything is a 7:00 PM start.
So, I assume, thank you, Corey. I saw, I assume that the Anglers would want the opportunity to sell some of their food, obviously, before the game starts. But along the lines of what Shereen was saying, if maybe we could regulate the hours so as to allow the mobile food in the community center parking lot from whenever you want to start it in the morning until 5:00 o'clock?
I might even, well, that, that'll work, but I wouldn't get close to the 6:00 time. You know, the, their start time. They have to get set up, you know, and if people start coming. You go to those games, they're mobbed and it's tough to find a parking space. So, even if we didn't, this is just an option, didn't even consider putting a food truck there on the day the games are being played, and then do it at other times. It's a scheduling nightmare, but, not nightmare, but.
Apparently, there's only one, one day when there's a early start because of the doubleheader.
Right, yeah.
We could go from, what do we have as a start? 9:00? 9:00 o'clock on most of these?
Well, I see what you're saying, yeah.
11:00. You could go 11:00 to 4:00.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that.
We could start with that and we'd like to hear from the Anglers, too.
And maybe, maybe Shauna can communicate with Mr. West and try to come to an understanding of what might work at his, without interfering with their schedule or us, whatever.
Food truck guys are here, too. It's logistics, it's setting up and getting down.
Jeff had a comment, and I just had a quick, I don't think it conflicts at all with their schedule. I think it's, and I think we're being very accommodating to the A's. We could, if we wanted to, just put a food truck there. And we've been accommodating to their fundraising efforts. So, we're just trying to find opportunity for people that are visiting and living here to have a different food variety in the town of Chatham.
Sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. And I think we can find a way to coexist.
And I think if the games are at seven at night, I mean, if the food truck's out of there, if that's, you know, what we want to do, get them out of there by four, four-thirty even, I think there'd be plenty of time for other folks to get in there and access the anglers' option. I'm all about the pilot program, checking out what succeeds and what doesn't, and doing an experiment to see what it's like for the summer. And I think both can coexist very nicely.
Okay. Anything else? I'll go to the public. Go ahead, sure. Just make sure you introduce yourself for the record.
Tom Deegan, Mom and Pop's Burgers, and I have a food truck. And I guess, you know, to Cory, you know, clarifying, and Jeff, clarifying the objective of having the food trucks. And, you know, going back a few years, my understanding was trying to provide options for the large masses that come down that may not be able to get a seat in one of the restaurants. Different food options, something quicker, a little bit on the go. And also, to also support the local merchants, who in the past had seen maybe a decline in the number of people that have gone downtown. And I guess, too, one of the things that I've heard, there's a comment, you know, if you're trying to make food trucks, based on our experience with food trucks, you need volume. They're expensive to run, just like a restaurant is. And if we're trying to not have them downtown during the busy season, then I think that goes against the objectives that I've heard for the past few years, and it's not going to be attractive to food truck operators. I mean, you know, the area that you mentioned that does allow food trucks, I think there are a few areas in town. And I think the proof is just how many food trucks operate there in the off-season. None. And the reason being, because they're not going to be profitable. There's every bit the amount of work to operate a food truck as there is to operate a brick-and-mortar, and in some ways, it's more challenging. So I think if you are trying to meet this objective, it's important to understand the food truck operator and what their, you know, really need is, and the need is volume. Case in point, when we come down, we do the Oktoberfest, or we've done First Night, great opportunities, lots of people. If we did it, you know, the night before, the night after, it would be a loss, because there's just not the population. So just one thing to consider. I heard a comment around the generators, you're right, whoever raised that point. But some food trucks, like ours, also runs off of electric. Now, Orleans with Nauset Beach, what they've done is they've put in electrical sources at the beach so that the trucks can plug in. So if you're looking to have a long-term spot for food trucks around town, I would encourage the town to look into putting in electrical sources for those trucks. And right then, the noise issue goes away, because there's no need for a generator. Just something to consider. I offer, if you have any questions, we now have, I guess, three or four years of experience with running these trucks in different towns. We've seen a lot of, you know, ways that the towns have gone about this. I haven't heard anything that's other than those things that are too out of what we've experienced. I could say we just, we have an opportunity ourselves to go down to Treehouse Brewing and Sandwich, which is an awesome opportunity down there, because that's going to be massive. We went down there today, met with the fire department, got our inspections, and we're good to go. And I think that's another thing from an operator's standpoint. The, I know we have to go through the process to do it, but, you know, the more barriers that are put up, the less interested, as a food truck operator, I am to go into your town. And businesses want us. And so just something to remember, if you want the quality food trucks, quality operators to go to the town, because ultimately, you know, there's some great food trucks out there and not so good ones. And the great ones are sought after. And, you know, we're going to look for opportunities and locations that will, you know, be the most attractive to us. And so just something to remember as kind of going through these regulations and trying to make it. Again, I understand that we have to go through procedures, and I haven't seen anything here that really is too outside of what we would experience elsewhere. But that is something from an operator's standpoint that we also consider when we're doing these things. It's just as part of, you know, we only have so much time to get these things done. And, you know, where there's ease, that's still a great opportunity. That's frankly the ones we would choose.
Thank you, Tom. I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned that you've gone to other towns and whatever. Is there anything that, that is, I'm sorry, that's an issue for you that you would see? I mean, you've mentioned that you looked at the regulations, they seemed okay. But, you know, there's going to be some sort of conflict with the brick-and-mortar stores that are here, and you have one out in West Chatham. You know, and where you're going to be and so forth. How long, just, how long would it take you to get set up and then leave?
So our food truck, we need about a half hour, if the equipment lights, you know, lights as it's supposed to. So half hour to get things lit and up to temperature, and then we operate. So it's pretty quick.
How about tearing down?
Same kind of thing. I mean, that's, the whole thing with the truck as well is, you don't want to get there too long ahead, because you're going to be sitting there, you have food onboard. If you are running a generator, you're going to be using your diesel, that's expensive. You have staff that are there, so that's labor costs. So you want to get there, get in, get up, set up quickly, operate, and then get down, you know, shut down quickly and go back to the shop. And then the other thing to realize is, you know, food truck literally is a moving restaurant. We have to do all of the same things that we do at the shop every time we run the food truck, which means, you know, breaking down all the equipment that needs to be, and cleaning everything, and putting away everything, and, you know, washing the dishes, that all takes time. So we don't have any interest in really making things go longer than need be, because number one, that starts to, you know, chip away at the profitability of the event that you just did. And it's just, you know, more work on our plates, so we try to get in quickly, do our thing, and then get going.
Okay, anyone else?
Just a final comment, very useful in an emergency as well. I remember the tornado.
Well, yeah.
You were the only spot in town.
Yeah, and I guess that leads me to a question that I have, and I don't know how this falls into the regs, but I know there is something in there with regard to food trucks operating. I understand the challenge of brick and mortars. I would question with the events that we have been down there, like First Night or Oktoberfest, have the brick and mortars suffered? Don't know that we have any data on that, but, you know, what would be the, what would be the impression of, you know, what's happened downtown with brick and mortars? And the other thing is, I think, you know, there was opposition a few years ago to operating downtown. And were the places that opposed even open when the food trucks were going to be there? And I think there's a fear around food trucks. Cities all over the place are operating with food trucks. I mean, obviously, this is kind of a different world from a few years ago. But is that really based in fact, or is it based in just general fear of competition and there being issues because of these food trucks? I don't know. I think our experience here would be during those events. And the question is, have the businesses that are operating down there, while food trucks have been operating down there, seen a huge hit to their business? And I don't have that answer. I don't have a look at that, but it seems to be pretty busy. But one question I do have with regard to the power outage is, yeah, there is a public use for food trucks as well. Our business is out in West Chatham. And one question I do have is, say, there is another outage, whether, hopefully it's not another tornado, but there will be power outages, and we have been able to operate. And obviously, from a business standpoint, that's better than having to shut down, but it also did serve a public need. Would the, would our, operating our food truck in front of our restaurant actually be allowable within the guidelines of the regulations or not? And then one other aspect to that is, you know, not just in terms of an emergency where it serves kind of the public good. And we were, when that happened, we felt really good about being able to do that. We felt really good about having, you know, tornado hits. We actually have a generator. Generator wasn't working for, I guess we learned that it wasn't quite set up properly. So we had to quickly pivot to set up a food truck in front of the restaurant, and we did it, and we felt great about doing that. There are other times, and that was kind of both a business opportunity and need, but also to serve the public. And we stayed until the last person was fed. But then there's also times where, you know what? Our washing machine breaks down, or we had a water leak last year, or our hot water heater went. And we have a food truck, and we operated out front a couple of days. And by the way, when we do that, we're able to use the product that we have, we're able to employ people, continue to employ them and pay them. Would we be able to operate the food truck in front of our business? Because we do have a brick-and-mortar, and within the guidelines, it's just, that's kind of a personal situation to our business that I've wondered about.
Okay.
Yeah, you could give yourself permission, because you're within 200 feet of a food truck. Be honest with you, I see no problem with it whatsoever. In fact, it served a public purpose before. I witnessed it.
Yeah.
I used it.
Dean.
Yeah, I think that's what the regs say. You can give yourself permission. You're the owner.
Okay, so I think you can do that. Am I reading that correctly, Shauna?
The.
This is under 2.2. "The provision may be waived by the select board. If written notice granting permission for a mobile food vendor to operate within 200 feet from customer entrances received from the proprietor or owner of the licensed food service establishment." And of course, the problem here is if there's an emergency, you'd have to come before the select board.
So the only, in the regulations, the board had suggested that for the first year, we not include food trucks on private property serving the public, just because of the liability issues of who's responsible for what. I would suggest that as food trucks are required to have that home base, if you will.
Yes.
That perhaps we could write in, that they would be able to operate on the premise of that. I forget the term for it, honestly. But that home base that they are, that they could operate from that property.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Shereen.
Also, I think that when you bring up a good point about cases of emergency and the availability of feeding people in the town, maybe we need to have some sort of emergency caveat to this, to be able to explore in the event of an emergency that's been declared, that we could allow trucks to come in and help feed the community.
Actually, that, you know, from a public planning standpoint, that might not be a bad idea. To even have a roster of food trucks in the event that there are. We see it every year where power goes out, and this year was not an exception. There were multiple days where the town didn't have power. And in the winter, it's kind of tough to operate these trucks, because it gets so cold. But, I mean, you know, we've done it, so.
Dean.
Yeah, the example that Tom gave was his own property, and that's what Shauna was responding to. But what about a, let's say you have a sandwich shop, and we do have them who are on a public way. So we should probably include the possibility, if they have a food truck, for their ability to park it in front of their store on a public street in an emergency. So they don't have to come back to the select board.
Any other comments?
Yeah, and if you ever have any questions about our experience and what it's like.
Public comments? Thank you, Tom.
I do have one more question, Tom.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I assume you're interested in servicing Chatham next summer.
We have to see. You know, like I said, we want to see what the opportunity is. Because the reality is, we've been approached by a lot of really great opportunities. And unfortunately, you said the challenges of the food truck. I'd love to operate our food truck every day, and I'd say we operate it annually, maybe, I don't know, 10% to 15% of the time. Again, we're in a climate where it's not conducive. We're also in a seasonal economy here. Climate where it's not conducive in parts of the year. But, yeah, I think we'd be interested. This year, the staffing was a challenge, and so we've turned down events left and right, unfortunately. I think we're starting to look a little better and going to be in better shape going forward this summer. But, yeah, it might be something that we would, you know, like all food trucks, we're just going to see what the opportunity is.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other public comments? I don't see any. Shauna, are you okay with that? Good. All right. Thank you all. Last on our agenda is an annual town meeting and a review and discussion. And I'll turn it over to Jill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight, you had a handout of what we call our scorecard with the votes that were recorded. These are unofficial results. We've also posted them on the town's website. Shauna laid out a couple of action items from previous town meetings where we've come back to the board. And I guess the most important one right now relates to the home rule petitions. That's the special act, special legislation that was approved by town meeting on Saturday. So she's outlined what they are. Article 28 is the new special revenue allocation fund for up to 2% of the local room's tax. And then the remaining ones, 47, 48, 49, and 50, are the refiling of the home rule petitions that had been approved at the 2021 annual town meeting, but due to the legislative session, they're set to expire next month. So we'd be looking for board direction on those refiling. And then if you have any other questions or want to discuss any of the other action items on the scorecard, which notes items that were approved by town meeting, or if they failed. I have just a couple of the recorded counted votes here. The town clerk and I haven't connected yet, as she's preparing for the election. But if there were other counted votes, we'll certainly add that to the unofficial results.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, go ahead.
So are we looking for motions to transmit, to refile the petition?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So I move to transmit the home rule petition, special revenue allocation fund for up to 2% of local rooms' tax.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's take a vote. Start with Shereen.
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Any other general comments? We had emails.
We have a whole bunch we have to.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just, to get through and kind of, Pete. I move to refile a home rule petition to establish a new housing trust.
Second.
Second. Discussion, seeing none. Vote, Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Mr. Chair, I move to refile a home rule petition to establish a real property transfer fee to fund affordable, attainable housing.
Second.
Second. Discussion, seeing none. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Mr. Chair, I move to refile a home rule petition for the use of Community Preservation Act funds, CPA funds, for affordable, attainable housing, up to 200% area mean income, AMI.
Second.
Second. Discussion, seeing none. Start with Jeff.
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Mr. Chair, I move to refile a home rule petition for prevailing wages exemption.
Second.
Second. Discussion, none. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
And that is it.
Thank you all. Any other general discussion?
I have comments. It's impossible for me not to have comments.
Yeah, we all do.
I'm sure we all do, but. So anyway, first comment is we miss Cory. So Cory, nice to see you, up and about. It was extremely cold. I got chilled to the bone. I was absolutely chilled to the bone. Dean was wearing his winter coat with the hood up, and I was in a sport coat, and I was like, gee, 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 anyway. But I had a lot of comments from folks that said they were really pleased I was outside, even though it got cold. And it was a little crazy late in the afternoon, but a lot of people said, you know, thank goodness, smart move, smart, you know, good decision. And it was long, but we knew it was going to be long, so that's kind of an overstatement of the obvious. Pleased with the elementary school vote. Pleased with the stepping stones. I, you know, we did meet with the school committee, Jill and I, and Michael Westgate was there, and they gave voice to the notion of, they certainly didn't kick us out of the room. In fact, they were very warm, and I suspect they'll be very warm about, you know, sending aside stepping stones. They did not take a vote, and I won't promise for them, obviously, they didn't take a vote, but it was a very good conversation. Tickle with a three- and four-year-old voucher program, I should say, support program for three- and four-year-olds, it was great. I thought it was really neat, having been to, I don't know, scores of these town meetings, to see some younger people get up and speak. I was really thrilled to see Danielle Tolle get up and speak, and Luther Bates and others. It was really neat. You know, sometimes you get the same old voices all the time, and it was really neat to have some new voices. Get really young, articulate advocates for issues. I thought the advocates for affordable housing, in particular Carolyn McClellan and Tracy Cannon, did a wonderful job. Tracy was eloquent. Thrilled with the airport vote, on both airport votes. I thought the proponents of those articles did not do themselves justice, and I'll stop there. I wanted to comment briefly on the residential tax exemption, and I know people were looking askance, and especially the Summer Residents Advisory Committee, and some in particular, folks that I have a lot of respect for, you know, were scratching their head about where I was coming from, and perhaps where our vote was coming from as a board. But I also think that the conversation itself raised some awareness on what the issue is here in town for residents that struggle paying property taxes, that really have trouble paying property taxes. Now, whether we embrace a residential property tax exemption or not, I think perhaps it's time for this board to explore other avenues and arenas and opportunities to provide those taxpayers relief. It may not be via a residential tax exemption, but I would challenge us to, going forward, to think about, what are the other means of getting those residents that struggle? And there are plenty that struggle, local residents that struggle with paying their property taxes year after year. And then I did want to have a final comment, and I'm sorry to be so long-winded, but the comment about private and public partnerships. And it is very easy to say that, oh, you should strike a public and private partnership, because, well, that's what works here in town. Well, you know, public and private partnerships are wonderful if the public knows about the opportunities. Unfortunately, the private interests in town get noticed and aware of private opportunities. Unfortunately, the private interests in town get noticed and aware of private opportunities well before the municipality. For example, we submitted, how many RFPs did we solicit for tracts of land for affordable and attainable housing? And how many responses did we get? Either a piece of land and/or a redevelopment opportunity. What did we get? So, yes, I think this board, going forward, in the past, but certainly going forward, is certainly welcome to entertain public and private partnerships if we know about them. And then we have to jump through further hoops in terms of, oh, RFP, getting assessments, and it just takes time for the municipality to do its thing, to go through the process by which we can obtain either redevelopable property and/or vacant land. So I ask folks, if folks know about something, to bring it forward, because certainly this board has been amenable to entertaining opportunities, and it grasped every opportunity that we possibly could, and then some. But to just flip a switch and say, hey, you can do a public and private partnership, there's a lot of noise that comes with being municipality. And I guess I'll end there. I enjoy town meeting. It's truly, you know, the most basic democracy in action, and for all its warts, and it's, you know, it's just really wonderful to participate. So those are my thoughts and comments, and I certainly want to hear everybody else's. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Shereen?
Jeff, you said a lot of what I was thinking as well. I do want to congratulate everybody for getting everything done in one day, but I also think that some of the articles failed because they fell victim to attendee retention. And at the end of the day, and folks, it's Chatham downtown. It could be sunny in North Chatham or West Chatham, but when the fog rolls in, it gets very cold. So I just, I'd love to see more outdoor town meetings, I really liked it, but everybody needs to be prepared. I really, really, really was disappointed in the 127 Old Harbor Road, and I'd really like the select board to revisit their initial vote that led to this, before this became a petition article. It only failed by seven votes, and for a two-thirds passing. It has received a majority vote on a couple of times, and I, you know, I know the opposition throughout the process leading up to town meeting, there was, you know, there was one neighbor that was very outspoken in opposing any affordable housing there. But I challenged everybody to think about, you know, how that this rhetoric has gone on. It's always been, well, you know, I didn't know Mrs. Ellis, but I'm sure she would have thought this way. Well, we don't know what Mrs. Ellis would have thought about affordable housing, but we do know that she's probably, you know, I mean, we don't know, and she's not here anymore to tell us. And I'm going to leave that at that, but I do want to say that we should look at her home and her barn and do something creative creatively, and present a plan to town meeting for housing. Now, I'm open to hearing what some of the folks had said about the, about other programs there. I'll listen to them, but, you know, we're at a real tipping scale here in Chatham, and affordable housing and attainable housing has got to go on now, because we are being faced with a change in what this town is going to look like forever. And I think Tracy Shields was eloquent in what she said about the challenges for any business to thrive and survive in the town of Chatham. And I, and I thought Megan made, Story made a good point about us, you know, not depending upon, you know, certain individuals in this town coming to our rescue financially to save, you know, save a piece of property that we would like. We need to be looking at everything, and I'm going to continue to move this forward, and I'm going to continue to move housing issues forward. I'm not discouraged by, I mean, I was discouraged, but it just made me more resilient in my focus on what I want to do as a select board member.
Thank you. Dean, and then Corey.
I need Corey, by the way.
He was? Okay, Corey?
Oh, okay, thank you, Peter. No, you know, obviously, I wish I was present for that marathon meeting. The reason behind, obviously, you know, I was sick, so I was stayed in isolation, and you guys got to have all the fun. I do appreciate the fact the town manager was keeping me updated throughout the day via texts, so I knew what was going on as you guys were plugging through the town meeting warrant. So I do appreciate all that effort from everyone who did stick it out and put through the efforts. You know, while I wasn't there, I do know town meeting, being outside, I just have some benefits. You know, in hindsight, we'll probably want to look at, starting a little bit earlier, you know, 11 or 12, whatever, but I think it is a good venue, and we just need to tweak it a little bit here and there. All in all, it's a good platform. There's going to be a lot of articles, I don't know why, there are a handful of articles that didn't pass a town meeting, that this board's going to have to sit down and think about politically, philosophically, mechanically, what we should or should not move forward, and how we should discuss things, or what other conversations are opened up by that process. So, you know, it's not like town meeting came and we're stopping these conversations. They need to continue. You know, we may just have to approach things, certain things in a different manner, I don't know, but they're not going to go away. Housing is not going away, and we need to talk about it. I will keep an open mind on things, you know, but I do think we need to, you know, really listen to what was said and figure maybe a slightly different path forward to get where we want to go. We need to move forward. So I'm just going to say great effort, everyone, put the time in, setting up the meeting, you know, spending time, the voters. I know we had, you know, dueling events going on in town, you know, whatever, but for those who went and stuck it out, I very much appreciate your efforts, and look forward to doing it. Again, hopefully next year, I'll be there in person, in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amen to what Corey just said about the preparation and staffing of that meeting, and to the town manager, her entire staff, the CERT people. It really went very well. And much kudos to the public for sticking it out. You know, it's unfortunate, when we placed the articles on the warrant, we put the controversial articles intentionally at the end, so people would hang around, and then, of course, we have no control over the possibility that they might be moved around. And that always affects the attendance at the end when some important matters come up. I do want to say a couple of things about specific articles. I was thoroughly thrilled, I think Shereen was as well, with, because I was sitting next to Shereen, with what happened with the Eldridge Garage. Having worked on that with this board, Shereen and I worked on the special committee that met 17 times, but it goes back even before that, when the property became available, and the board, several of us were on the board at the time, balked at buying it because of the environmental consideration. And I give special credit to David Oppenheim and his group for stepping up and taking care of that, along with Dr. Duncanson and others on the staff and the town manager, to make it possible for the town to acquire that property. And I also want to acknowledge the work of Katie Donovan, who was very much involved staffing the committee, and right up to her presentation at town meeting, which I thought was very much to the point, and I think helped sell the project. And, of course, we have a prospective donor, I think it's going to make, it's going to make things a lot easier, but we should remember there are two other pieces to this project, including the upgrading the parking area, and also sort of cleaning up the area in the back of invasive species, so that we can have a nice little open space area, as George Olmsted had wanted us to do and made available his son, his son's services. The residential tax exemption, I, you know, I want to credit former selectman Taylor for bringing that forward. I think we all felt it was kind of a creative and innovative idea, and I don't know where that's going to go. Jeff has articulated, you know, things are evolving in this town, and we've seen it, and there should be some tax relief that we can come up with. We're going to have to deal with that anyway in September, that particular issue. I also want to mention one other thing that was sort of brought up. Tangentially, it was ruled out of order, and I think probably appropriately so by the moderator, when Mr. Taylor brought up the idea of electing the charter review committee. I'm not sure that's a bad idea. We had a very difficult time, as everybody on this board knows, getting people to apply to serve on the charter review committee on a couple of occasions, and maybe something like that is something to be considered, or maybe a mixture of elected positions and positions appointed by the select board. I don't know, but it's just an observation I would make. I do want to say something about housing. I was certainly pleased with those housing initiatives that were passed, and I think taken together with the Buckley property and the prospect of something happening on stepping stones, and the church property that was, that is going to be acquired. We have some significant projects moving forward, and I think that's good, we need to add to that. I don't know if we'll ever get 170 units in this town. It's hard for me to see how that's going to happen, but we should try. I do want to say something about 127. My good friend and colleague to my left has articulated her thoughts on it. I've been opposed to this from the beginning. I don't think that the record will show that my opposition has been limited to the intent of the donor. I will say on that point that I have heard from several people over the course of the last year or so concerned that not honoring what is the written intent would discourage future people from wanting to donate property to the town. One can argue that, I guess, on either side, but those are, and those are from credible people in town who have reached out to me. I was concerned also about, and I think especially, the prospect of encumbering this property at a time when we don't really know what's going to happen with the senior center. Both proposals related to the senior center that are being, that are the subject of a feasibility study are, involve usage of the community center. We're trying to do our best for the elementary school. You know, maybe what Shereen was proposing, that she would like to hear some sort of concept or proposal for those who want to include the Ellis property in the recreational program, while at the same time accommodating some type of housing, at least that's how I heard it, maybe that is worth looking at. I would say with respect to housing, I think Elaine Gibbs pointed it out at town meeting, and she was quite eloquent, more so than I think I was, that the, you know, there's no assurance that you can wind up with a young family with children in that, in that house. The system of assigning affordable housing, and I guess attainable housing too, is largely lottery-based, so those are considerations that weigh in my mind about it. But I respect the position of people on, who are, of those who are advocating that this be put forward for housing, or I guess we're just going to have to, you know, have that debate going forward. And I do want to say one thing in general about town meeting. Yesterday, I was at, the same morning, I was at Chase Park to watch the delivery of this massive boulder stone that's going to be the base of the monument for the Revolutionary War that's going to be unveiled on Memorial Day. And there was a gentleman there before the stone arrived, who was attending to some trees, and I won't mention his name, but he is from the Friends of Trees, and he asked me about town meeting, what I thought about town meeting, and I said I thought it went well, and some people got what they wanted, and some people got what they didn't want. And he said, yeah, it's a lot better than having tanks rolling in the streets. This is what democracy is all about. So I think it was a productive town meeting. It was long. There were moments, as the afternoon was dragging on, that I was hoping we would go on, and it was getting colder, that I was hoping it would go into the next day, and Shereen kept saying, no, we need to get this done today, and I think she was right. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman, and I leave the rest up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. I'm not going to spend a lot of time. What I've heard, I guess, I agree with considerable, most positions. I'll just say that, you know, when I first ran, I ran on affordable, affordable housing, but it was more around young people and our elder with the senior center. We were at a crossroads, I'll call it crossroads, anyway, on coastal resiliency, dredging, what were we going to do? And out of those four issues, you know, we've gotten to a point where we're moving ahead on three. And I regret that senior center hasn't moved ahead. And I understand people's concern, and whether or not it's in the proper location, but things are just getting more expensive. I really worry about it, and how it's going, what's going to happen, but, you know, I've heard a number of people say, we wouldn't use it, and, you know, it's a waste of money. We already, with a, not, in my opinion, a, not a very functional senior center, have 1,500 people using it, individuals, every, almost every year. Maybe they're out there for five or six reasons, but in any case, I hope we can move ahead with something like that. Affordable housing, I agree with all you. We've taken major strides. Town meeting was a wonderful discussion about affordable housing on both sides. I agree with Jeff in a way, public-private partnerships can work, and we've seen it work. We've seen, I'll use Mr. Oppenheim as an example. However, to do that on a large scale, there are certain legal, every time I mention it to the town manager or our town council, why can't I go out there and go ask the guy? Not so fast there, Mr. Krikolas. You know, you have to be careful on how you do that. You can send an RFP out, but this is the people's money, and this is, this has to be an open process, not something that people would point a finger at and say, oh, you're going to give, take this piece of property. I'll give it one example, which frustrates me to this day, and I understand what happened. We had a piece of property sat for a year, and we offered the property at a market rate, and somebody came in and overbid, bid over us. Part of the reason was, they thought that this is better for conservation land. Okay, I get that. I sure hope they have a deed restriction on that now. But the point was, it was probably sat there for so long, it had, it was already zone residential, and it had four lots on it that were, and we lost that. So, you know, and we've been very fortunate to be able to get the church property, which was, was good, and Buckley property, because, you know, it's still in work, but the point is, we put the RFP out, we understood that they wanted to do it, and we're, it's going to happen. I certainly hope so, and it's in the right place in West Chatham for that. So, you know, when it, when it comes to affordable housing, it's not going to, we need options, I think Jeff has said that before, we have to do the right kind of housing in each, each of the areas, and you'll probably see me over there when it comes to affordable housing, and when it comes to the senior center. That, I'm very much involved with. So, anyway, I thought these were good comments. I would also say, you know, we talked about setting up, we did a, we, towns and staff, town staff, did a what, in a week and a half, from moving inside to going outside, yeah, a lot of the things were set up, but it's not necessarily logistically that easy to do. And pulled it off, and it went, it went very well, and I have to admit that I was cold too. It was, got really cold. Yeah, right. But in any case, any other? Yeah, I know. Well, I looked over at Dean and went, why didn't I think of that? Dean, go ahead.
Peter, I neglected to mention one thing. The net result, as I understand it, although it wasn't mentioned at town meeting by Alex, is that the tax rate is going to go down. Is that correct, by about five or seven?
Yes, it is. Part of it is the valuation of the town is a year behind, so will feel the effect this year of it going down.
And so, Peter, you should take some credit in leaving your chairmanship with a tax break for people in Chatham.
All right, I'll take that. No, I, thank you. I think this is a well-run town financially, and I can think of other places I've been, and especially when I moved here. What we pay, never mind tax rate, tax rate's one thing, but how much you actually dole out every year is reasonable compared to other places. However, the point is... However, the point is, we have a real problem at the low end that we don't see. I say low end of the income level. I know when I first started here, which got me involved, I, somebody said, well, you ought to do something out of your comfort zone, and maybe go take a look at homeless prevention. And I'll tell you, that's a real eye-opener. Given, and we're not talking about people that are sitting around collecting checks, you know, I mean, I have a problem with that, but we're talking about working people, we have a seasonal, seasonal employment here, we have people that have businesses. All you need is someone being sick in a car accident, I saw that, and $2,000, it sometimes kept somebody from losing their home, because it's just a slippery slope. And it's, it's something that we don't see, and obviously, they're not going to get up and say that, a lot of them are very proud people, and I was, to me, it was, it was not only an eye-opener, but something that I thought this town in a lot of ways was taken care of, and so the Cape was moving ahead, but not fast enough. And all you have to do, you don't, you don't need to be a rocket scientist to figure out if every town on the Cape just about is losing students and losing young people, you know, because of whatever reason, and that's partly, it's housing and the difference between our income and our, and what we can afford to live on. But in any case, same issues, I'm beating a horse to death, and I'm talking too much, and I realize that. But anyway, I got my, this is my last one, by God. But anyway, thank you very much. Are there any other comments on this?
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay. Shawna, you all right with that? Okay, that's the last, all we need is a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Aye.
Cory, I think I lost them. Dean?
I'm here.
Okay. All right, okay, Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye, and good night, Chatham. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.